All right, in six o'clock, we'll get started. We'd like to start on time and end on time as best we can. Have a call to order, please, and the pledge by Ms. Jackie and the invocation by Ms. Pam. So if everybody please rise and remember your hat.
Let's pray. Oh my God, we come to you with hearts full of thanksgiving this week. And we thank you for our country and the state, and most especially for the city. And we just ask in Jesus' name, Father, that we would listen carefully to everything that's brought before us, that we would speak slowly and make our decisions based on humility, integrity, and compassion. Thank you for all you've given us. Thank you so much for the staff of this city and for our firemen, police, and first responders. And I just pray that your presence would be here amongst us this evening, and in your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you all, ladies. Roll call, please, ma'am.
Bill White?
Here.
Jackie Grunberg?
Here.
Mike Davis?
Here.
Willie Alderson?
Here.
And Pam Johnston?
Here.
All right.
Oh, I want to make a motion to suspend the rules to make two changes to the agenda. The first motion is to add 11G, the purchase of the vacuum truck, to get a second vote. A second motion is to change 11F to discuss on process to hire the city manager, get a second and vote.
We'll need a vote on each of those individually.
Yes, please.
What was the, all of them again?
The first one is the purchase of the vacuum truck.
Do you have a motion and you need a second?
Yeah.
Okay.
To do what?
They left it.
All right, hold on one second. All right, you're making a motion to suspend the minutes, or suspend the rules, please. All right, we have a motion to suspend the rules.
Yeah.
All right, I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, your first change, please.
Okay. The first motion is to add 11G, the purchase of the vacuum truck, to get a second and a vote.
Okay.
And I apologize, it's just an error on staff. We all saw the videos at Thursday night, and it just did not make it on the agenda.
That's correct. All right, we've got a motion, and do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, your change to F, please.
The second motion is to change 11F to discuss on process to hire a city manager to get a second and a vote.
Okay, we've got a motion from you, correct?
Yes, a motion.
All right, do we have a second?
Ask question?
Yes, ma'am.
When you say we add in a discussion, we're just going to, we're going to discuss the city manager position?
Uh, discussion of the process to hire.
Okay, I just want to be clear on that.
Okay, we've got a motion. We have a second.
Second?
Got a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I don't really understand.
We're going to have a discussion on our process of hiring the city manager.
That doesn't stop you from hiring the city manager tonight.
Cory?
Well, the goal of this motion was to like, to limit the scope of what's before you today. Um, you know, I sent an email about...
Please let her finish first.
Yeah.
She's got the floor.
The goal would be to make sure that we're discussing the process first before you decide how to move forward. I think that's step one of, well, this process. Um, that, that was the request. I mean, it's very general right now, it just said city manager position, period.
Whose request?
Um, mine.
What wasn't this requested Thursday night?
Because Thursday night, we were, there was a lot of brand new information. So after I was talking to people, this was the recommendation I actually received from someone else.
I don't want to step out of bounds.
That's why Cory recommended it.
And I don't want to fit things in my mouth I probably shouldn't say.
Let's tell you what, let's do, we have a motion and a second.
But what we're doing is, is wrong. And it's wrong to the African-American people. We're saying that, I don't think we're really giving her a chance of what we're doing tonight. Somebody has, has made somebody make a motion to, to change this around.
You can leave it open if you want, and just have city manager position, and we can go like that. Um, the goal was to further specify what we were voting on so that the citizens and all of y'all know exactly what's going to happen tonight.
And again, this should have been rolled out a lot more than the way it's been, it's been done.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to change F two. Discussion on the process to hire a city manager. Roll call vote, please, ma'am.
Bill White?
Yes.
Jacquet Grunberg?
No.
Mike Davis?
It still should be left just like it is. I understand we can make changes for some items. But what we're doing tonight is wrong, and I'm going to leave it at that.
Get a vote?
You guys have a vote?
I'm saying we're not giving, we're not giving somebody her due given, is what I think.
Willie Alderson?
Yeah.
And Pam Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Three to. All right, approval and correction of minutes from prior meetings. We've got a sec, uh, October the 12th from the study session and October the 17th from the regular meeting. Once you've had a chance to review, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to accept the study session from October 12th and the regular meeting minutes as presented.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Awards, presentations, and appointments, I don't know of a one.
There are not any, mayor.
Okay. Completion of review of unfinished business from prior meetings, ordinance 2023-1118. Again, this is a public hearing and a final reading of ordinance amending Title V, Chapter 6 of the municipal code of the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, dealing with purchasing.
And Mayor and Commissioners, uh, this is where we learned that the, our charter has changed. All the other cities that have the same charter we do, and that threshold from purchasing went from 10,000 to 25,000, and we're matching that, uh, threshold so we can move forward on other projects. Um, right now, we have to do a sealed bid on anything over 10,000, and in this day and age, it's, um, pretty low.
Yeah, won't get you much anymore, will we?
Not after COVID.
No. All right. Uh, any comments, questions from the commission? Hearing none. Again, this is a public hearing. Would anybody here care to speak? Please let the motion or the minutes reflect that no one cared to speak. With that, I'll entertain a motion on ordinance 2023-1118.
Make a motion, we approve ordinance 2023-1118.
Have a motion? Do we have a second?
Thank you.
Got a second? All those in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Monthly report from mayor. Uh, Saturday night is the tree lighting. I would encourage everybody to be here. We've got a beautiful new Christmas tree. It's something new for the community. Uh, last I heard, we've got like seventy-some, few-odd young children from the middle and elementary schools is going to be here to sing. And, uh, we're going to have snow.
Mm-hmm.
Whether it's real or not, we're going to have snow. And, uh, I would highly encourage you, if at all, it's going to be a little cool, so it'll be Christmasy. So, uh, I would encourage everybody to be here. I think it's going to be a great event. So that's all I've got. Uh, monthly financial budget report, please, ma'am.
He's been there tonight, you didn't give him a time.
Uh, six o'clock, a visit with Santa at five.
Thank you.
Ms. Shipra? There we go.
Just wanted to pull up some of the reports that I emailed you all, um, on Friday. This is the new one that I referenced in my email, um, just a crash transfers report. I think there's sometimes questions on, you know, what did we do with certain amounts of money? This is really just highlighting big amounts that we may have transferred between funds, or we may be waiting on a payment that we may have transferred, or what our monthly transfers are. So the first one that's on there is pretty much what we transfer every month from the general fund to keep the parks fund afloat. Um, the second fund, uh, the second one is where we transfer funds into, um, a construction account for water and sewer to just have some capital projects funds out there. This is our overruns account that we carry at, uh, another bank, so that way we can kind of keep collecting funds as we, um, try to, you know, continue with our projects in the future. The rest of those are just the transfers that we've made, the gas inter-fund loan that we did, um, the spec building money when it came in, you know, it's sitting in a savings account as well with, or a construction account for the general fund. And then the TMA, uh, funds that we received, we put it back into the wastewater account. I just feel like certain big amounts of money, when we transfer them internally, the only record that you all have is just a balance sheet that you see or a financial that you see, but you don't actually know what's behind it. So I just wanted to be more transparent, and Kate and I spoke, spoke about this last month, that it's probably a good idea that y'all are aware, when I transfer big amounts of money between bank accounts, you know where they went.
Good.
Um, this is the capital projects document for the inter-fund loan when we first did it. I know I've emailed this to you all when we did the debt report for the Comptroller's Office, um, to first get it. And I think there was some confusion on the years that are listed right here. That's just the useful life of these projects. That's not how long we plan for these projects to take to be done. So I added notes on them, yes, we do not plan on taking this long for these projects. So that, just because of the study session confusion, I just wanted to clarify a little bit of that. We're already working on bids with MTAS to do certain paving projects around the schools. However, because that was the will of the commission originally, is doing some paving projects in a high-traffic areas. But the schools, I think, have come back and said they're having a, probably in the next, was it five years, Philip? In the next five years, they have major plans to renovate around those areas. So we may need to, we're going to regroup tomorrow, um, morning to try to figure out, you know, which projects we can still do and not try to put our money where those roads are going to get dug into anyway. Um, the park, uh, the paving at the parking lots? This is the, the parking lots over here by the baseball fields and the, uh, fields off of 43. Um, this is where we're actually proposing the purchase of the land instead of using those funds towards paving the parking lots, because we want to have ADA compliant lots. And with two baseball fields there right now, the rules that are, the size and the number of the lots that are required, we don't have enough space to even put those lots out there.
Yeah, we can't meet, we can't meet our own zoning code for the number of spots that we need, and then the, the work that's going to be required for ADA. We engaged with John Clarkson from MTAS, which, you know, is an engineer, to try and give us some idea of the cost of this, and it's going to be a bigger project than we originally anticipated.
Exactly.
And we don't have the space for the parking.
We don't have the space, space to be compliant with our own rules, to be able to put those spots out there. So that's why we thought the, when that land, uh, option opened up right next to our lots, if we ever want to grow and build proper parking, parking spots in that area, we need more land anyway. Um, the basketball court, and then the restroom is in that same area is to, when we do that project, is hopefully be able to do the restroom as an ADA compliant, uh, restroom at the...
The shelter, you mean?
Uh, the one restroom at the park.
Oh, yeah.
That was at the same area as well as at that park.
Different park, sorry.
Basketball court and the shelter are the two items at Gardenia Park that we've already, uh, reached out to vendors. The purchasing policy that was passed earlier today raises our limit to $25,000. We've been stuck at $10,000. You cannot do any kind of concrete work or any kind of shelter work for $10,000. So we would have been bidding it out. So we started the process, when we started the process of looking at starting these projects, that's when I found out, you know, the raise, the limits have already been raised for all the other cities. So we automatically get to piggyback on that law that's already been passed by the state. So those quotes have already been received by vendors. Um, with the policy passing tonight, tomorrow morning, like I said, we all have meetings to go over the paving and start working towards, um, picking the contractors to the basketball court and the shelter.
And those we anticipate being completed this spring.
This spring, yeah. Funding is there, contractors are hopefully getting lined up, so.
Mike?
Okay, so ma'am, I guess I'm, I'm looking at this.
Mm-hmm.
So paving the street, we're going to borrow $150,000.
Th- this is already borrowed.
I know, that, but for 25 years.
No, 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 that's the useful life. We expect the road to last 25 years.
It's like depreciation, the road will last that long.
Yeah.
Okay, let's go back to the $500,000 then. What is, what is the interest rate and the, and the time to pay it back?
When we borrowed it from the general fund back in the summer, we did the debt with the Comptroller's Office. The law require, it's the inter-fund loan, so it's the general fund borrowing money from gas fund. When we borrow those funds, the law requires you to pay what you're earning at the highest investment at that point. At that point, our interest rate with the banks was 4.81. So we're paying the gas fund 4.81 interest every year, but we're paying it over five years. The point of having the useful life in this document was the Comptroller's Office wants to make sure that you're not, I'm not paying $500,000 over 30 years, which outpasses the useful life of any of these products. So we're, we're turning it back in five years. The general fund already had the budget, we'd already budgeted that money along with the interest rate. So the gas fund is getting 4.1, 4.81, which is about 15,000 this year, um, in interest, I think, that they're going to get. And as we pay it, because we're paying it over five years, the next year's amount is going to be a lot lower. And I think you guys have all, all of those documents are in your email, because when I did that report for the Comptroller's Office, I sent, um, all of that out. Yep.
Yeah, I guess I should have looked up a little bit harder, I say it, useful life.
Useful, yeah.
But I guess when I looked at it, I saw that...
That's why I brought this up, because I, I think there was confusion last meeting that this meant that's how long it's going to take. No, that's just for the Comptroller's Office to know the useful life of each one of these items. That way, we're not paying for anything past those number of years.
And it's the same for the bond issue. They want to know the useful life, because they don't want you, uh, repairing sidewalks if, if their useful life is not going to be 20, 30 years, because you're borrowing money for a long period of time. So they always ask that question.
Can't finance it longer than, um, the useful life, so. But we're financing it five years through the general funds. After five years, we won't owe it to the gas fund.
And those payments are already in the budget.
In the budget, yeah. That's most of everything that I had for tonight, if you all have any questions for me.
Can we get the specs and the size of the shelter in the baseball? I need that for court, please.
We can send that to you. I think the, the shelter is similar to air mines, correct? Yes.
We can get that email to you, because I think tomorrow morning, we'll meet and kind of go over some more details from what the vendors have sent us, not that the purchasing policy has passed and we can email all of that.
But the paving and all that has done been let out, or?
Well, we've run into the problem now that the school is telling us that they're building this, um, softball complex, and they're going to be tearing up the road. So that would not be the area that we'd want to fix the road. Um, but we're still looking at the ballparks and the parking and the ADA, but what we're hearing from the engineers is it's going to be very costly, especially with the stormwater runoff. So we're kind of just continuing to research that.
Something in, something that we learned when we went into this process as well. If you're doing any capital projects that's $50,000 or more, you have to have an engineer. You have to have plans, you have to have an engineer, so. That's something that, you know, any of these projects, if they're more than 50,000, we have to do that.
I lead this, I told it making some sense, doing, instead of allowing you to borrow 30 years, to have a five-year life.
Yeah, because we got a water plant that we told down, and we're still paying for it.
All right, any questions for Shipra?
Thank you for continuing to improve these reports and, and just make sure that we have it all clear so that we're all good on it.
Thank you.
Amen.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, entertain a motion to approve Shipra's report.
I make a motion to approve, to approve the monthly financial budget report.
Got a motion? Do we have a second? Got a second? All those in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Monthly report from city manager, please.
Um, Mayor and Commissioners, I just wanted to make a statement after, um, things that are, have been on the agenda. So I wanted to kind of remind, mostly people up here know that, um, I was offered and accepted the position of city manager eight years ago. And at that time, I agreed to serve for three. And we had a lot of turmoil at the time. We had a moratorium because of our sewer projects. We were, had lawsuits, we had some problems with, um, who the city manager was going to be at the time. But this commission and the former commission made some really tough decisions, and we financed some things where we're making a ton of progress here. But, um, in the past few months, I've met with each of these, uh, city commissioners separately by themselves to discuss my, uh, desire to retire. I've been working since I was 11 with my paper route, and I think I deserve to be able to retire. I explained to each of these commissioners individually that I have no date in mind, and I don't have a plan. I just wanted to have an exit strategy so that I knew that everybody was aware of my desire to retire. Uh, the city is progressing so well right now. We have so many projects on board, including millions in grants awarded and more grants under consideration. The city will have a new sewer plant open in 2024. Staff is moving into our new fire hall and codes administration building basically as we speak. Those are just a couple of the, the projects. Um, Mr. Davis mentioned our, our sewer, our water plant, and that came online in 2016, and it is, um, state-of-the-art facility that everybody that's here should be proud of. I have an excellent, excellent leadership team here, and I care about everybody on that team. And I want very much for them to be able to continue what we have started. So when I went to the commissioners, I offered to have a plan where I could talk with people that are in my industry, that are my colleagues, that have been in this industry for a long time. And if they had any interest in coming here, I could bring that interest to the, to the commissioners. After talking with each one individually, and this is months ago, I did not have any opposition given to me, um, at all. So I did, uh, go forward and talk with a few, a few people. I did make a recommendation, and it would have been up to the commission to negotiate any details with that person, if that person became the new city manager. However, last week, it became clear that there may be a desire to open up the search process to others, aside from who I've recommended, and I have absolutely no problem with that, and I think it's a great approach. I would recommend that the commissioners discuss the possibility of using MTAS to assist with the posting and the review and the recommendation of a pool of candidates, because there will be more, now that we are, are going with more than one candidate in this service that MTAS provides at no cost, and they've been doing it for many, many years. And this should not take more than a few months. And then you at the commission can discuss how you want to do this. It's all your decision, and all the negotiations are your decisions. There's been no negotiations up to this point. So I just want to offer that as to how we got to where we are today.
Anything else, Kate?
Nope, thank you, babe.
All right, thank you.
I wish that it had been under 30 million, if it should.
All right, special reports, wastewater and Mount Pleasant gas, please.
Let me get that in front of me. In wastewater, uh, we've completed, I think it mentioned at the study session, we've completed some of the camera work on the trunk line where we have a few concerns, and we are following up with those issues with, um, Barge on that. That'll be a continuing report each month to you. Rainy Street, uh, we're still waiting for some, um, more materials to arrive on site, so we can get started there. I think you all know that the large wastewater treatment plant, we're waiting on electrical gear, and so we're kind of in a demobilized stage at this point until we can, we can get those, um, that, that equipment in. And the wastewater system model, we have kicked off with that, with, uh, city staff and meetings, and we're reviewing existed, existing data and continuing to meet on getting that model completed so that we can use that model like we can use the gas model and the water model. And that's it for that. And there is not a gas report, except that I, um, do want to say that we did learn that the, uh, grant that we applied for to expand the size of the meter at Cherry Glen, we did not get. The state said they had $33 million in money for $55 million in requests. But we had a hour-long meeting with the state on next steps so that we can continue towards that goal. And, um, that was a, a successful meeting this morning. I, I think we'll continue, probably go back in the spring. Wanted to let you know that we did get notice that we did not get the first draft of that.
Any questions, Kate, on wastewater or gas? All right, new business. Ordinance 2023-1118, this is a first reading. An ordinance to amend portions of Title 11, Chapter 3 of the Mount Pleasant Municipal Code relating to offenses against the peace and quiet.
And, uh, Mayor and Commissioners, we talked about this at the study session. We've had some problems, because our hands are a bit tied with the way the ordinance is currently written. It's more from an automobile than coming from people's homes or businesses. And if you look at this, uh, ordinance, uh, if the noise is audible within 50 feet, or if it's clearly audible from a, a passing of a motor vehicle, or if it's after 9:00 PM and before 7:00 AM, we have the ability to cite, uh, that situation, and we don't have that right now. So that's why that is in front of you.
All right. Yeah, Mike?
I have one thing. I mean, if, if this is put in place, is this going to go back like a, I guess, another situation? You know, where we say the lights are good, but when the lights is showing, you know, showing on somebody's back porch, and they can't, they can't go out and enjoy their back porch, you know, because of too much light coming on the property? And we can't really do nothing about that. We say that that's between the business and the other person involved. So will this here be the, be like the same way? I mean, you know, if it gets down to it, you know, the city can't really do nothing? It'll be between an individual and that person?
I don't, my understanding is, and the police department is here, this doesn't have anything to do with light, this is only sound.
Only sound.
I'm just, I'm just saying, I'm just going back to an ordinance that we have, Kate. I'm just, I'm just putting an ordinance that we have, that we're not doing nothing about.
But we did measure the light for that specific point that you were talking about. We actually purchased a piece of equipment and measured the light, and it was within our code.
Yeah.
At that time.
I think the difference between that ordinance and this one is that one had to do with, um, that particular situation that you're talking about, um, had to do with compliance with the zoning code. So that was essentially grandfather issue or compliance with the code that was already in place. This is the present tense, the way we would go, not just go forward. This is something it has, in order to validate this ordinance, you have to be doing something right now.
What it does, that it gives us a clarification on how we can actually measure this. Right now, you can play it as loud as you want, when you want, and we can't measure. We don't have anything that tells us how we can measure, whether or not you're playing your music too loud. Uh, this just gives us the sense of measuring.
This is specific in how you measure it.
And I'm, I'm for that, but I just want to make sure, you know, for this right here, you know, that it can be enforced, I guess, by our police.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Just for your information, they're the ones violating it.
Well, and it needs to be. I mean, the guy that we was talking about, I mean, that's...
Yeah.
And as we told you all in the study session, we looked at a variety of different sample ordinance that are, that are in different communities, and we picked this one because it is specifically measurable. Um, by the device, I don't know what to call it.
So it's by decibel, so we can either do it by decibel, or we can do it by yardage from your property line?
May I say one other thing? But at the same time, we're going to have to have a little legitimacy there, because I guess of our music and stuff around the neighborhood, if not. So we've got to have, we've got to have a little leeway if you...
That's the reason they put tabs on it.
And the same, you know, downtown, but I'm just talking about being loud or whatever.
That's what...
Would you anticipate those teeth being complaint-driven?
Uh, I think so, probably, probably 95% of it will be. The neighbors calling, complaining that the music they was doing too loud.
And there are different measurements for different times, so if y'all want to change those times or those measurements, that's...
I'm good, I'm good with the music and everything around the town, I just don't want to...
Now, if we get a complaint now about music, we can't, we can ask them to cut it down. We can't really make them cut it down. This, this gives us the, the teeth to be able to, hey, you're violating this ordinance. Kind of cut it down.
Okay.
All right, any other questions for Michael? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
Thank you, Michael.
Appreciate it.
I will make a motion to approve ordinance 2023-1119.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 2023-49, resolution authorizing the city of Mount Pleasant to... Resolution authorizing the city of Mount Pleasant to participate in public entity partners property conservation, conservation matching grant program.
And Mayor Commissioners, we apply for this each year, typically do get it. Um it's a four thousand dollar grant and we're using it to uh continue putting cameras at all of our facilities and um it we we have to match it a hundred percent. So if we end up spending three thousand, we'll match it three thousand, but that's what we're anticipating um spending this money on.
Okay, any questions for Kate? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to accept resolution twenty twenty-three dash forty-nine.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
Okay.
Got a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. C T form for Durangos and this is just a report on debt obligation.
Yes, this was something that was approved months ago, but the Durangos are finally in and operational and marked the way they're supposed to be, so we just have to have in the minutes that we've acknowledged this debt.
Hey, we need, we need a motion in?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't think so. All right. Any questions, comments from the, okay, they look fantastic. Purchase of radios for police and fire?
The Mayor and Commissioners, we talked about this um last week. If this is something that is a much larger pro uh program that the county is doing where they're spending ten million dollars on towers and radios to get all of us in the entire region where we have redundancy in our um radios. It's great for us. Uh it's a cost of two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, but we are benefiting from the ten million that the county is investing in this. In fact, they're purchasing these radios for us. So I'm asking just for this to be in the minutes, but we are pursuing a USDA grant for the two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. And if we get that, the city would pay a twenty-five percent. And uh if that is the case, then we hope this money moves quickly because it's first come served, first served, that there'd be a resolution in front of you that USDA would require to get this grant and we would meet the match of twenty-five thousand. So just it's just informing you that we're pursuing that grant.
All right. Any comments or questions? Kate? We don't need an order.
We don't, thank you.
All right, potential purchase of park property. And I think each of you have a map that we looked at Thursday last week.
Yes, this is a because it's kind of a overhead picture and I just feel like as a city manager, I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't tell you that there was green space next to a park we have that is on the market. Uh the realtor that has it on the market is Jimmy Campbell and he's here tonight in the audience. Um and they've had a couple contracts on it already that have have backed out. It's on the market right now at a hundred and thirty thousand, am I correct on that? Yeah. And um it's right at three acres and it abuts to the hidden acres um senior home. And the only thing that if the city wanted to move forward on this, I think we'd need to work out that the street that you see here is probably a private road, that we'd need to make sure that all of that was um if there was easements or anything like that we needed to do. But I just want the city to know that there is green space next to our green space. If we want to pursue that, we have the ability to do that.
Mike?
I hate to be negative or whatever sometimes. But we're just saying, using this right here for parking space or whatever, or possibly could be used. So you spend a hundred and thirty thousand for that. So we get and we do all that parking and then you have all this water runoff. What does that mean that we're gonna have to do with drainage? Or we're gonna have to spend another possibly two hundred thousand to correct the drainage or 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 has any study even been done on it?
No, that would require an engineer and would require us to spend a lot of money to do that. I know that the two, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Campbell, but I know that the two contracts I've had is people want to put about four homes in there. Um anybody that develops that property is gonna need to do some um
But I mean, I mean, there's a lot of difference when you put a parking place on three acres versus homes or whatever, you're gonna have a whole lot more drainage
Can I ask?
Absolutely, just one second, wait.
Okay.
Yep.
And pavement. And I just, I just think there's needs to be we need to know more about this than than just, I guess, going ahead, but that's just my voice. Go ahead, Phil.
Well, just for clarification, is this is just asking or giving the city permission to pursue this and see what if we even would be able to use that road if it may need, we'll have to get an engineering, but I mean, just to start the process of looking at it and seeing if
And they're into a contract for the horse sells to somebody else.
Yeah.
Basically.
With a lot of not a lot.
I mean, I I couldn't answer a question of what it would take right now to do that. I'm just saying it's green space next to our green space.
Right.
And and any any city manager conference we go to, they're gonna tell you, if you find green space, get it because it won't be there in a few years.
Yeah, but if you're gonna pay
Mike, let's see if she's finished, please. We're we're trying to do this orderly again.
He was talking to Bill.
No, I would.
Jesus, give us pain. Hey, uh no, I just wanted to be clear on what it is we're actually voting on. So if we decide to proceed, then you guys would go ahead and if you felt that it was something that was, we could do it, would it come back before us to actually approve the purchase? Or would we this be giving you the authority to go ahead and purchase it?
Corey, help me with this, but I guess I'm thinking it would give us the authority to try and negotiate up to the purchase price and then we have to come back.
This is your decision on what you would be authorizing.
Yeah.
You know, when we purchased properties in the past, what you did as the commission was they, we authorized the city manager or Shifra or whoever to negotiate up to a certain amount. Um but if you wanted to ask her to pursue a different investigation or something like that, you could do that as well. So this is just a, she brought it to your attention and it's on the agenda as potential purchase of park property, so it's the balls in a court.
Just to add, the parking spots that we discussed earlier, the ADA spots that we want to do next to our ball fields, we don't have space to do those spots right now per our own code. So that's the only reason we even went for this is we need to put parking spots there if the ball fields are gonna have traffic. Obviously, they will always have traffic. We don't have good parking there. Our goal was to put good parking there and now it's like, okay, we don't even have enough space to meet the requirements to put parking spots for two ball fields. So when this land opened up, it was like, we don't have enough money to do what we wanted to do. We don't have enough space to do it, but then this opens up right next to our ball field, so it's it's just something, thinking about the growth that's coming to town. So that was another mindset behind it.
And Shifra failed to mention that uh the idea would be that the same fund, the the inter fund loan would be where the money would come for this.
Correct. The hundred and fifty thousand that was on that previous report that I was presenting, that's where the funding would come from, whatever is remaining, we would come back to you all if the land, if we even get it, because obviously there's a lot of people already wanting it. Um if we do end up getting it, it would come back to you all to what we end up doing with the plans or it's as a commissioner, as a person or as a office, we can't approve anything that's more than twenty-five thousand dollars without y'all's approval anyway. So anything more than twenty-five thousand dollars has to come to commission anyway.
Aye.
I just want it to be known that if we flood these homes over here for the cost of this project, it was bought up.
Okay.
Can I?
Yes, please.
Um I hadn't thought about that, but I think that if we've got the opportunity to have a place where we can have ADA compliant, compliance, that's one of the biggest problems in the city anyway, is we do not have ADA compliant spaces. And so to be able to have that, I would, I would think that it would protect us in the future, potentially, for being sued for not having ADA compliance. So I think that that's a really important point.
And just just the policies and procedures we have, anything over twenty-five thousand dollars that we spend comes to you all for approval. So it doesn't, whatever we end up deciding it do in the future will come to you all. It will be a commission decision. We can't do that without the
And over fifty, we need an engineer.
And it's gonna be more than fifty thousand dollars, so we'll have to get an engineer to tell us how the water and the drainage and everything would work because we cannot do, I doubt putting a parking lot there is gonna be less than fifty thousand dollars, so.
How long have we not been ADA? So
I think that's statewide.
I mean, I'm
Commissioners here working on ADA at the county for a decade now, maybe? So nothing, that most cities and counties and government buildings are not
Still struggle to get there, yes.
Yes. Uh yeah, I think here, this building, I think personally just working, and this has nothing to do with me working at the city or the county, the city building is more ADA compliant than the county buildings are. When we got our quote on how much it would cost us to make the county buildings ADA compliant, we said it would be cheaper to probably rebuild the whole building.
Right.
Ow. Ow.
When you build something new, when you build something new, that's when the requirement goes
Kicks in, yes.
But the law goes back to the early eighties.
Any more comments from the commission? Hearing none. Anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I feel like we need to go ahead and buy it, then I make it any more green space, place, uh face. And we already need that space for our parks and for our kids to have somewhere to park ADH accessible. Um I'd say give the city manager to go ahead and purchase.
They negotiate.
Negotiate, sorry. Negotiate.
Are there parameters on that motion?
I think we should put some
Uh, I do.
Listed at a hundred and thirty thousand, they've already had two contracts at that price. Is that correct?
Which both have, not gone.
Yeah. Putting houses, putting houses there requires a new road and sewer and water. That's costly as well.
I think we need to keep that in mind. Just thinking for family that's always done it, I would, I would encourage us to let Kate begin the negotiation and let that see where it goes and see where it finally winds up and then we're not gonna be able to do it until it comes back before this commission anyway. And then you'll have the opportunity to come up with what it would be and then we can come back here and vote on exactly then, we're gonna know facts and figures.
For the motion is to negotiate for the purchase of the property.
Up to the listing price.
Like the mayor's saying, not to buy.
That's right.
Then we come back to
Come back here.
Then we can go in and find out what some kind of
What you're saying, give Kate
But Kate's got the authority to begin to negotiate.
Yes, okay.
But you need to make that motion, please.
Oh.
You can just, you amend your motion.
Uh me and my motion and uh I'm saying, go ahead and give Kate the right to negotiate the property to be bought for the park.
Okay. How does that work for you?
I just want to make sure we're, what you're saying is what you mean. We're giving her authority to negotiate, but she cannot purchase this property without coming back to the commission. That's a motion?
And I have no problem with that, but we do also run the risk that we come back in December and it's been sold. It just so that we're all on the same page.
So if we came up with amount, then that would be better. That you, in that way you can negotiate up to that amount.
Completely up to you guys. You've done that before where you've gave, given like a not to exceed. And and the the commission gave that authority, so the mayor could sign that because you had already voted to give that authority. I'll let Corey chime in on that.
It it's up to you. We need to make a motion one way or the other at second and then y'all would vote on it. But I think what Kate was suggesting was to give her authority up to X amount to go ahead and complete it. But I think what y'all are discussing right now, motion that stands right now is just to negotiate and then to come back to y'all in December perhaps with a, with a, this is what I propose, this will be the official amount we buy it for and then you would vote on it. So it's
I mean, that could change my vote. But again, before we do anything, there will be a complete study of what would happen if we disturbed this land or whatever.
The study could cost more than the property. So I don't think you'd have a study done.
Not, so wait, I think we're asking different questions. So Mr. Davis, are you asking whether or not there would be a study before a parking lot was put there?
Hmm.
Or before the purchase?
I mean, from what I'm gathering, let's just say if we give this hundred and thirty thousand for this property, if we get a consultant or somebody to go out and see what has to be done to this property, it could be five hundred thousand dollars.
Or what are you asking for a consultant for? For the construction of a parking lot?
Yeah, I mean, what we're disturbing this land, putting pavement, what?
Right, so like Shifra said, this, there would be no study to purchase the property. The per, you would just buy the property as it, you know, as is. Then, once y'all came back later on and decided as a commission what you wanted to do going forward, if that was to build this parking lot that we've talked about tonight and it was over fifty thousand dollars, that's when an engineer gets, gets engaged.
There are, there are no plans.
We have not paid for anything right The only thing that started this conversation was the the original capital project list that we came up with with the five hundred thousand dollars. We were looking at that list, there's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we said we're going to try to put good parking spaces at the ball fields. When we looked at the ADA compliance, it was like, we can't do that. It just happened that this land came up for sale that week when we were discussing this. So that's why we were like, that's maybe the best use for the money, but it is the commission's decision what the best use of the money is. There is no plans, there's no funding appropriated to put anything on that lot. The the item on the agenda is only to purchase the land because it came open right next to our ball fields. And if somebody was putting houses on there or whatever, I think it'll just take away from the ball fields too. So it's land right next to our parks. If we were to ever do anything with it, we have no money appropriated, we have no approvals for it, we would come back to the commission and ask y'all, you don't even have to put a parking lot on it, you can put whatever you want on there.
And then we could have spent a hundred and thirty thousand dollars on land for nothing.
To save space right next to the park, I guess, would be the only thing or have
Okay.
I'm not sure that there is a motion on the table. But there is, can you clarify what it is so we can see if there's a second?
Okay, you can deny it. I put a motion on the table that we purchased the land, well, negotiate a property that's for sale by the ballpark. Um I'm gonna say, I'm gonna throw a number at there, a hundred and twenty
It's on the market for a hundred and thirty.
Hundred and thirty, but you said give an amount to her to negotiate up to.
Up to a certain amount, so.
I can say a hundred and twenty dollars.
You can say a hundred and twenty.
Okay, a hundred and twenty thousand then.
Okay.
Okay, right now we have a motion on the table for our city manager to negotiate the purchase of this property up to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Roll call vote, please, ma'am.
Bill White?
Yes.
Jacqueline Grunberg?
No, we got to purchase this to use the Blue Cross Blue Shield grant and I will not approve that.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand what you said about Blue Cross Blue Shield.
No, because that's why we're purchasing the land.
No one's mentioned the Blue Cross Blue Shield.
You have to stay it for Paul, use it for Paul. And the gr, and you have to help undevelop land for that grant and we have applied for that grant for that area over there. It's all undeveloped land we would have over there.
It could be something that we apply for later if you wanted to.
Okay, my vote's no.
Okay.
Okay.
Willie Alderson?
Yes.
Pam Johnston?
Yes.
Passes three to zero.
Yes, Mike.
Mike.
Oh, I'm sorry, I went right by M D, Mike Davis. I'm sorry, I apologize. I'm not used to doing this.
I can't vote for it because I don't know what the outcome.
It's three to two, my apologies, my apologies on that.
All right. All right. Yep, now with the changes to discuss our next steps in the hiring of the city manager and at this time I'd like to turn the floor over to Corey for her to make her comments, please. please.
So I sent you all an email on Friday, and I've talked to several of you individually, but I think there is still some confusion and many of you have questions on how you're supposed to move forward, how you can move forward with potential city manager position opening. First and most importantly, the search and selection process for a city manager is completely the decision of the board of commissioners. Also, you have the discretion to follow whatever process of selection that you want to choose. Tonight's agenda item, as amended, is discussion and vote on process for hiring a city manager. I recommend that you choose a formal process for selecting and hiring a city manager. As outlined in the email that I sent you last week, here are a few options for you to consider as you decide how to move forward. First, you could formally open the position and choose a selection process to follow. There are a lot of different ways that you can do this that would bring in qualified applicants. Here are a couple for reference. You could start a search process by hiring M Task. This is a process that Kate mentioned earlier that M Task provides for free. This process usually takes between three and five months. You could also select a different group of people beside them task to do a selection process. You could issue a RFP for a search consultant. That would be these professionals that kind of go out and vet different applicants and then bring to you a poll at the end. You could formally open the job on the city's website, just like you did the city judge position or any other position here. You would post a job description and timeframe for applicants to submit applications. Regardless of the process, it's important that you have clear parameters for how the process will work. There are benefits and downfalls for each of the above selection processes. However, each of them helps legitimize the process, promote transparency, and will hopefully lead to qualified applicants. In my opinion, this is the best and most transparent option for the city of Mount Pleasant. If you'd like to move forward with this option, I would recommend that you vote to formally open the position and then to decide as a group tonight, which process, one of these or a different one that you wanted to follow going forward. Another option that you could proceed with the consideration of the current candidate with whom you have already begun individual discussions. The city has the discretion to find a candidate, consider them in isolation. If you would like to move forward with this decision, I recommend that you vote to move forward with this person. And that too, you vote to give me or somebody else the authority to negotiate the terms of that person's contract. I do not recommend that you mix these processes together because that can muddy the water. Under either option, the decision to hire someone and the negotiation of the terms of any city manager contract must be made in a publicly noticed open meeting. This board has the exclusive authority to negotiate the terms of the city manager's contract other than those that are already dictated by statute. Also, to be clear on what has transpired so far, there has not been any group interview or negotiations of any city manager candidate, to my knowledge. The commissioners have had the opportunity to meet with candidates who have shown interest in the position one-on-one. This process going forward, whichever process you choose, should remain transparent in all deliberations and decisions on how to move forward and who you hire and what you pay them has to be in these open meetings. I'm available for questions from the commission, but otherwise now is your opportunity to discuss this next step on this commission item. Yes.
Okay, Mike.
Okay. And you said going forward tonight. But this should have already been out in the, in the public. The public should already have known this instead of, you know, we was fixing to hire a city manager without even him being here and discussing anything like we did with you, Kate. And, and the way that we're going about this, and don't, don't get me wrong, what Kate said earlier, you know, I agree with her, I agree with her. She wants to make sure the city is left in good standard, and I appreciate, appreciate her what she's done. But we should have had a meeting for Kate, like even on the study session or on the Tuesday regular meeting. And she should have said, you know, come to us and said, "Commission, commissioners, I am planning on retiring within six months." And we need to go from there. But we didn't.
This is your.
And now, and now you're saying that we could go with Victor whom we interviewed last Thursday. But we can't go with the, with the person that we interviewed tonight.
You could do that as well.
You said, she's not in there, she's not in there.
She did not say that.
She did not say that.
I used his name in the email that I sent out on Friday.
Why didn't you add her name in there?
You've had a chance to interview her individually, the same way you did him, so.
It's just like I said Thursday night, we're going down a road that we probably shouldn't be going down.
And this is your opportunity to, the process that you just described, where Ms. Collier would come to you and say, "I'd like to retire, please hire a new city manager the way you see fit." That's the moment you have right now.
And the way we got, way we got it right now, and I mean, I've never heard of such. I don't have a date. So I mean, if we got a, a new city manager, does that mean we're going to be paying for three city managers?
No, you're in control of all of that. That's the process that I believe that you would, once you decided how you wanted to hire a city manager, you would start setting the parameters. Then you would talk to Ms. Collier and say, "We've got somebody new, but they want to come in on this state. Would you stay overboard or buy?" Whichever you wanted to say. You know, this is, these are decisions before this board. I understand that there's been a lot of allegations about things happening in closed doors. But again, to my knowledge, there has been no group discussion with anyone.
No, no, but I'm just saying the way we went about it, that's not, that's not.
Well, the recommendation is that you.
And you know it's not, and you know it's not, it's our attorney.
Mike, don't be, I'm sorry, but don't be making accusations to her. Don't you start threatening me.
I shared the process with everybody.
Yes, she did.
But commission, what I recommend tonight is that you decide.
You're threatening me, Bill.
Out loud.
Let's get that straight.
Amongst each other, how you want to move forward. Yes, ma'am.
Pam. I think that, well, a couple of things. We are on a really great trajectory as a city.
Yeah.
And we've hired some really great people. And I shared with Ms. Rhonda, I shared with Victor, that it's extremely important to me as a member of this commission that we continue that and we not go through a prolonged international search. I think that given stuff that's been thrown around, it may, I think that the best thing would be to go with M Task and try to do a sooner than later search so that they would be, I'd feel more comfortable with somebody who is in the area, who can help us, it's Tennessee, and we need somebody that's local, we need somebody that knows the city, we need somebody that knows the area, is already connected. We're too far along in too many things to bring in somebody completely cold. So I think, and I'm, I'd be correct if I'm wrong, I think they would really help to funnel that with the existing folks that are interested as well as other people that they think might be. Is that correct?
M Task's job is to assist cities in all different.
All different.
We've heard them referenced like four times already in this meeting, you know, they helped us with the stormwater.
Yeah.
Um, surveys, they, I've already forgotten the others, but they provide a lot of services. This is a service that they provide, they use it a lot. This is something that they would recommend also, they would be glad to help you with. I think you can reach out to them, that's a perfectly fine process to, to start today.
Okay, just a second. Ms. Willie, you got anything you'd like to add?
Yes, I agree with Commissioner Johnson. I say we go with M Task, let them help us out, their way be fair. Ms. Kate, I appreciate you wanting to stick around to help us with whoever we hire. You have did an awesome job and I just appreciate it. We've got awesome staff. So you offered to stick around to help out with the whoever we may hire is greatly appreciated. So, and I appreciate you giving us the heads up that you wanted to retire. You did send it out in the email and you talked to us, and I thank you for that.
Mike.
In saying that, I mean, that's just like most citizens of Mount Pleasant don't realize, I guess the person that was going to get the job, the citizens of Mount Pleasant was going to pay this city manager a hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
They were.
And that, that's what's on his, that's on his contract. Laugh if you want to, Bill.
It's all up to you.
It's all up to me, all up to us. But I want the citizens to know, you know, that it's just like our taxes, you know, you tax people and then you come in and give somebody a hundred and seventy thousand dollar a year's job. And I'm, and I'm going to leave it at this right here. I'm making a motion.
Wait, we have not allowed everybody to speak just yet.
Do you have further questions for me or are you just?
No, just stay there one second, please. Flash, ma'am.
I don't know why we would go with M Task when the commissioner has always been the one to interview and hire the city manager. And I mean, if they were that poor of a job, then how did we get such a good city manager that we have seen here now?
Anything else?
No.
All right. I think we should open the search for city manager position. I think for transparency for this community and for everybody involved, I think we need to open the city manager position. I also think we should ask M Task to help us establish a search process for the position. In my opinion, this process will help us get the best city manager for the city and is the most transparent option. Concerned that it might take a long time, request that we do a slightly expedited search so Kate can make her future plans. This is an important topic, topic for our city, so we need to have an open discussion, which we have asked. So at this point in time, I'd like to make a motion that we formally open the city manager position and ask M Task to help the city with the search process.
Did we already have a motion from Pam on that?
No, no, let's hold up.
No, I've made a motion. I have made a motion.
You would not let me make a motion.
I have made it.
And my motion was for Ms. Rhonda.
Nobody else had had their opportunity to speak, yes.
So the mayor, so the mayor gets the last.
No, I think Ms. Johnson made a motion.
She made a motion, and I'm supporting that we ask M Task to support us and help us with the search process.
It's not going to be like the city judge.
Did I misunderstand you, Pam? Did you make a motion?
No, I was saying that that was where I felt was probably the way we should go.
And I was making a motion for Ms. Rhonda Hooks because I think she's, she knows what she's doing and, and she can do the job.
As of right now, I make a motion and I made it formally.
No.
I made it formally.
No, no.
Okay. Corey?
That, that was wrong.
You can vote on Mr., you can vote on Mr. Davis.
You know what, let's just vote right.
Somebody get a second for one of these motions.
There you go, if I don't get a second, it's over with.
Get your second.
Can we hear your motion, please? Because there's a lot of turmoil.
My motion is for Ms. Rhonda Hooks as our next city manager.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Bill White?
No.
Jaclyn Grunberg?
Yes.
Mike Davis?
Yes.
Willie Alderson?
No.
Pam Johnston?
No.
All right.
I'm sorry, Rhonda. I think, I think they've done you.
I make a motion that we formally open the city manager position and ask M Task to help the city with the search process. Do we have a second? We have a second. Roll call, please, ma'am.
Pam was the second. Bill White?
Yes.
Jaclyn Grunberg?
No.
Mike Davis?
No.
Willie Alderson?
Yes.
Pam Johnston?
Yes.
Three to two.
Can I say one more thing?
Yes, please, ma'am.
Mike, just to be clear, that doesn't mean that she cannot be considered. And that doesn't mean that we could not be considered.
Law order, please apply.
No, y'all just, y'all just told her that.
We did not tell her no. Good words in my mouth, I did not tell her no.
All right, next we have is the vacuum truck, please.
So, and I apologize, that's my fault. That was on the agenda, you, at the study session, you all saw videos, videos of how that truck operates. It's been on our capital improvement plan for a couple of years and it's actually in the budget. And we have the state bid on that, and we're getting a thirty thousand dollar discount and a fifty thousand dollar grant from USDA. So we would like permission to move forward on that. And the next step would be, as we move forward, that we come back in January with a resolution from USDA. And this is again, the truck that you saw operating on these screens the other night.
Yeah.
That, that, the feedback I get is that we can use it in all of our utilities, water, sewer, and gas.
Any comments, questions from the commission? Hang on, entertain a motion.
What will be the, I guess, how many years will it be on this?
Fifteen. It would be splitting it between all three utilities and the general fund.
Okay.
It's fifteen years split between the general fund, water, gas, water, sewer, and gas. And there was something else, and it's in front of you all because it's more than twenty-five thousand dollars.
Right.
Okay.
All right, entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we purchase.
Vacuum truck. Vacuum truck, every vacuum truck.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Posed?
No.
Okay.
Order one.
Motion carries. General comments from citizens, and we've had one gentleman sign up, Mr. Edward Gillespie at 114 Garding Street.
I had a plan in my head, and I'll be very candid, Ray.
Three minutes, please, sir.
Yeah, Mr. Davis, you're right. And I hate that, I hate that, I hate that, what I just saw. I was going to give this really nice speech about, you know, for those of us that, when we graduated from school, he told us, "Leave, get an education, and don't come back." And this is why they tell you, "Don't come back." You know, for those of us that have went on and been very successful, to see the level of maturity, it's embarrassing. It is very embarrassing. Especially while, what's up, girl? You know, I, I don't, I don't really have the words to say. All I know is I'm going to run for office, we're going to change some stuff.
Thank you.